I would be happy to. The Norfolk Board of Selectmen meeting for October 21st at 7:00 PM. First order of business, we have the Housing Authority in for a joint appointment of a new member, 7:05 or thereabouts. We have Scott Bragdon, our HR Director, to update and review policies, followed by a Town Administrator Report, including, please consider allowing Norfolk Food Mart, Linda's Variety, Norfolk Wine and Spirits, and Provo Liquors to be open on Sundays at 10:00 AM, effective October 23rd, 2014. Please consider approving members of the Norfolk Elementary School Trust. And please consider voting an order of taking for 14 Sharon Ave. We also have discussion items, including Board of Selectmen goals and review of the fall town meeting warrant. And please be advised that this meeting will be audio and videotaped.
Thank you. Forgot that. Thanks, Jack, very much. Are we gonna have the folks from the Housing Committee come up? You guys wanna come up? It'll be probably easier, right? So what do we... Do we need a... You can sit around the table. Pull some chairs up.
That's all right.
Hey Peg, how are you?
Very good.
Good, thank you. Nice to see ya. Take one of the comfy chairs?
Yeah. Doesn't matter, I just figured the microphones, we only have one mic.
Hi, Mr. Shannon.
Betty, sit in this nice comfy chair.
We don't bite.
Sit right here.
Do we have to get a police escort to get you up here?
He can self-escort.
Self-escort.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you. Okay, so would we need a motion to do that? I'm not even sure.
Actually, you wanna just have the new members, or the new members to us, and introduce themselves?
That'd be great, yeah, thanks.
For the audience.
For the audience, right.
Oh, I'm Peg Driscoll Johnson.
I think I'm the clerk or something. Yeah.
Sounds like me. Okay.
I'm Betty Leehan, and I'm Vice Chair.
We take our roles very seriously.
Looking good here.
I'm Herb Maury, I'm the Chairman.
And Bob Shannon, I'm a member.
Well, welcome everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was entertaining.
So I, yeah, I think you'd be as simple as just somebody nominating a new member and a second.
I will nominate Bonnie Dietrich to the Housing Authority.
Second.
Questions?
All's in favor? Oh, sorry, questions? Sorry, so quick, yes.
No, I think we...
Oh, you guys have to, yes, my bad.
What do we have, do we have to do it?
No, I was gonna vote.
Oh, you gotta vote, you gotta vote.
Right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passed.
It is unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Bonnie, for volunteering.
Excellent.
I understand this is a new procedure now, for all the boards in town?
Flip the microphone.
I understand this is a new procedure for all the boards in town, that, you know, you nominate someone and bring them on the board, that you have this meeting with the Selectmen and do it this way?
I don't think it's new.
Oh, it's not new?
Only when there's an opening.
Yeah, it is an unexpired term.
Oh, okay. News to me, but I'm learning.
Well, in that case, I nominate Betsy Leehan, who's a member of the Housing Authority. This is the next?
No, no, just one, no.
Just the new, just the new member?
So we're just, we're just filling a vacancy for somebody, we're just filling a vacancy on an elected board for somebody, we had a, somebody stepped down, so this, we had one vacancy.
So it's just one, you can pre-schedule?
Correct.
Just the two clerks, please.
No, I just need, just the two clerks, but you signed it, so have...
How about the two clerks and the chairman? That'd be great.
What am I, the secretary? Can I be the chair?
It doesn't matter, we just need one from each board.
You could be the chair.
I don't know. Just for the nomination thing.
By all means. That's the clerk's pen.
Please.
Sign right under the other signature.
Cross me out.
Just sign right under the other signature.
Sounds like Congress here.
I think it's worse right now.
It's better, it's better organized than Congress.
That's for sure.
No, I just signed by mistake. It was supposed to be Jeff. I know. Jeff, you wanna sign just, take everything, thank you, Dory.
Oh, wow.
We're here to share.
Yeah, you got candies.
How's everything with your group?
I knew it was worth coming.
Things going well?
Yeah, we're doing well. Everything's going well, and the Housing Authority is chugging along.
Chugging along.
Yeah.
And we look forward to working with Bonnie.
Yes, she'd be a great addition. Her husband Scott was one of the original members for a long time. Seven or eight years, I think, wasn't he? Because you've been on forever.
Scott was before me, and as you say, I think he's an original member from the 70s.
I think so.
Yeah. Bruce Simpson, Scott, and some others.
Good, good. Okay. Let the tradition continue.
Excellent.
Thank you all. Stars of the fusion.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, though, you know that. It's riveting. We might get better, too.
It's just getting started.
We might actually get, we might actually know what we're doing.
Nice to see you.
The other thing.
She and Brown debate at 8:00.
Oh, that's right. That'd be interesting.
Nice to see you.
I hope Brown doesn't show up. I hope it's actually Charlie Baker. The Baker's tonight, right? Baker tonight. Brown, Baker. Charlie Baker's tonight, too, but I didn't know if, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, you said Sheen and Brown, oh, yes. But it's, but it's the gubernatorial tonight, too, isn't it? Yes, Charlie Baker's tonight, yes.
It's a doubleheader.
Right. Oh. Riveting. Coakley, yeah, yeah, sorry, I, yeah. You were one step ahead of me.
Let's hope none of the candidates bring a fan to that debate. It'll delay your enjoyment here.
But then they won't come out.
They'll get hotter a little later.
Good night, guys, ladies.
That was, that was tough. That went well. That went well. Scott, you wanna, can we try and make it better?
I promise to be equal.
I was gonna say, we're going from a high of an appointment to a high of policy.
Revise. Welcome, Scott, thank you.
Can I just mention two quick things first?
Absolutely.
Just to let you know, the DPW Union Contract expires the coming July, so we actually had our first meeting with them today. They presented us with the list of their ideas.
Sorry.
I thought it was a very productive meeting, and I look forward to working with them, and Bob, and Jack, over the next few months. I think it'll be early next year, but I would hope to have it settled by early next year, and we'll move on from there. But just let you know that that's starting. The other thing is that Scott knows this, but I finished the job description in the posting for the temporary energy manager position. Hope to have that posted this week. I actually sent Rob a note, I'm looking for some outside places to post this that are in the industry. If any of you guys have a thought, I'd love to hear them. It's posted as a 19-hour position, temporary position, so...
That was a $25,000 grant?
The grant was 25. We have to kick in, I think, 10, at least 10%.
10% of the 25?
Yes. And hopefully we get some candidates. So if anybody has any thoughts of candidates, that job will be posted on the town website later on this week. The reason I'm here today is to talk about sort of the next in the policies is family medical leave. It's a law that's been in place for, I don't know, 15 years or so now. I wanted to write a policy on this. I didn't know that the town had anything, and Julie actually came up with one that had been approved by the board in 1999, which I didn't know about. It was, you know, 14 years, 15 years out of date, so I have updated this. This is consistent with current law and practice, and it is something that we've actually, it wasn't something that we as a practice had been following regularly, but it is a good, solid practice done by every town that I know of and every business that I know of. We should be following it, and we will be. We have been using it for the last few people that have been out. So I can't tell you it's exciting reading, but I can tell you it is compliant with current law. It is something that sort of every year I have to look at and just make sure that something hasn't changed court law, you know, case law or something, but it is, it is consistent. This talks about the provisions of the law, what the leave works at. You can, it's 12 weeks, and we're gonna use a rolling calendar, a rolling 12-month period. It could be 12 weeks. People can, can take an intermittent leave if they have an issue. There are, excuse me, standard federal forms that I use, they're come right off the Internet, so they're current for people who apply, and then generally I would use it. The standard for FML isn't extremely high, as it would be for a long-term disability or something. There's pretty, pretty well-known things that you would approve it for.
I have one question.
Sure.
And I think it's, I think it's answered, but just if you look on Section 5...
Yes.
And go to the second page, where it has definitions, and look under C. I assume that complies with state law?
Yes.
So although the terms may be, you know, standard terms, it is under state law?
Yes.
That answers my question.
Yep, and it would apply for same-sex marriages, or not same-sex marriages.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure we were complying with the law. I guess, when I read it through, it, terminology.
Yes.
Okay, good deal.
Jeffy?
Do we have to vote on this?
Motion?
I move to accept.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Scott.
Good, yep. The next policy I've started working on is automobile use policy for the town. It's something that most towns have, and Jack and I have talked about it, and I've started putting together some wording on that.
We don't have one currently, do we?
We do not have one.
You're gonna include motorcycles?
Yes, not privately-owned motorcycles.
Oh.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, can I go off the agenda for a moment?
Is it a hockey story?
It is not, it is a much better story. Not that his hockey stories aren't great, but...
Wonderful.
We have Sergeant Shannon with us by chance, and I was hoping we could invite him up, just, he recently had an experience that was pretty neat.
Yeah, come on up.
Please, sir.
So Sergeant Shannon attended the FBI National Academy.
I saw a picture of that.
And it was, he can tell you about it, but I can tell you from, just from my observations, a very impressive and grueling training program, and we're very proud that he graduated successfully. Welcome back.
Thank you, Jack, thank you. And how long did it last? Because I saw it on Facebook.
Three months, wasn't it?
It was 10 weeks. I'd like to stop by saying thank you to the chief for nominating me to go to the National Academy, and thank you to the members of the Board of Selectmen and the residents of the town for affording me that opportunity. What a tremendous opportunity. I trained in Quantico, Virginia, for 10 weeks, with offices from 49 states, including Alaska and Hawaii, and 26 countries. People from Korea, England, France, Canada, all over the world, as far away as New Zealand. And we trained in, I was given a whole catalog of courses, just like, you know, in college, to choose from, and there was classes in terrorism, and classes in death investigations, and gangs, and I took what I felt would most be applicable in Norfolk. I studied media relations and, you know, society, police and media relations, and labor law issues similar to what Scott was just discussing, FMLA and FSLA, and the Pregnancy Leave Act, and all interesting things. Excuse me. I took a course in managing transition and change in police organizations, and police psychology of leadership. Tremendous classes, really good classes. So it was 10 weeks, and there was a lot of physical training, physical activity as well. And if you ever saw the movie, the yellow, the movie was Silence of the Lambs.
Oh, yeah.
The film was actually filmed there, at Quantico, in the, in some of the obstacle course, the Yellow Brick Road. I got a brick, you know, to signify my time on the Yellow Brick Road.
Nice.
Yeah, it was a tremendous opportunity.
I just wanted to say, I should've said this ahead of time, I put Bob on the spot. He wasn't prepared to do this, but he was sitting in the audience, and I asked him to come up, so...
That's very nice. I think it was wonderful.
I appreciate you coming up, and I saw, also, you know, no disrespect to Chief Stone or Deputy Chief Carroll, who would, who are very proud of you as well, so...
Thank you. Yeah, and I have to say that it was a pleasure to have the company of Jack and the chief down to witness the graduation, and they had an opportunity to get a tour of the facility, and some interesting stuff in the Behavioral Science Unit, similar to things that you see on TV.
Nice.
And actually, the chief is a FBI NA, it's called the National Academy graduate, and he graduated back in the 90s, early 90s.
Oh, okay.
I always kinda wondered about that yellow brick in his office, and now it fits together.
Now you respect it.
Yeah.
Well, that's fantastic.
Yeah, and it was a tremendous opportunity.
Oh, glad you did.
Well, we're proud of you.
Thank you.
Glad to have you in our town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you very much, congratulations.
Thank you.
When we went down to graduation, Bob gave us a tour of the facility, and as you said, we got to meet one of the behavioral scientists, who had some chilling stories.
Sure.
But he, but he also took us into the media relations classroom, and we had a chance, and I've been meaning to sit down with him, I want to talk about the whole Jefferson, Missouri case, because I know you, you said you talked about it in your classroom, and I...
Yeah, we discussed it at great length, and actually, that's one of the courses that I've continued to do my studying on, is the media relations class, and just, you know, it prepared me to be able to come up here this evening, off the cuff.
Off cuff, yeah.
Yeah, and things to do, you know, control your background, what's behind you. If you look on YouTube, there's many police, other press conferences with people in the back, just trying to make fools of themselves and to discredit the speaker and whatnot, and...
They teach you how to blank that out, or just not even pay attention?
To control it, so it doesn't even get to that point.
Oh, doesn't get to that point, okay.
Make sure you have your back covered, basically, you know, set up a backdrop and things like that. Some really good things, and I've been putting together, Jack and I are gonna review them together.
Nice. Well, let's hope we never have to use them.
Let's hope.
What's going on inside?
Always the good, too, right?
But if we ever did, it would be nice to know how to do it right.
Right, right.
And we've had a few, I mean, I haven't, I've had a couple of interviews, certainly could use Bob's, Bob's wisdom now, but...
Yeah.
Chief Stone, a couple of times, and, you know, the district attorneys will, they are, they love media, so they...
Oh, yeah.
They generally step in, and, but we've had, you know, unfortunately, we've had a few cases that we've had to do a little speaking, too.
So the media class was instructed by a former and highly respected news reporter from the Washington DC area, Gil Money, Gil Moneybacker, Money, Pennybacker.
Pennybacker.
Pennybacker, and she's on YouTube with many stories, and the, some of the other classes were taught by agents, field agents, with law degrees and a ton of experience. One class I took that I thought was gonna be my kind of elective class that I would really enjoy, and it was crime and society's response to crime, and the instructor there was just a genius. You know, he, he had to have his own conference, where he had people come from all over the world, and they discussed four-dimensional printing, and robotics, and genetics, all types of, you know, very interesting material, and that was a, it was a hard class, but it was very interesting.
Congratulations.
Well, it's terrific that you went.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to have two on our force now, too.
Yeah, I can see where that's important with all the new technology, you know, some of the things you just mentioned, you know, weren't around some years ago.
Sure, yeah.
Back 10, 20 years, yeah.
Yeah, right.
How much, well, of course, there's really no way of telling, but I'd be curious how much difference it was between your class and Chief Stone's class.
Um, he could tell you.
Probably night and day.
Yeah. Yeah. In the National Academy, a little bit of history of it, was started by Hoover back in the 30s, when after the Lindbergh kidnapping, there was a move to nationalize the police, and Hoover wasn't really in favor of that, but he said, "Well, let me bring police from all over the country, and we'll train them that way." And then, after, during World War II, all National Academy graduates were actually inducted into the FBI, and they became agents because of the shortage of manpower. And then President Kennedy extended it internationally.
That's great. We're not gonna lose you to the FBI now, are we?
No.
No, no? Okay.
So it's interesting, you know, some of the things that you learned, is part of the responsibility to pass it on to other members of the force, like evidence, in terms of preserving evidence, and some of these things that are, you know, it's changing and continues to evolve with technology.
Right.
So you passed that along to...
There are some things that I will bring back to the department, and I have brought back to the, to the department, but those are things that we've learned at the basic academy, and we retrained in that annually, at our annual training. You know, we go to 40 hours of in-service training every year to maintain our skills and, you know, update on the law, first aid, CPR, things like that, firearms training.
Well, you've heard us all say it many times, but you guys do an incredible job.
Yeah, thank you.
And we're grateful for all that you do.
So, you got me started.
Thanks, Jack.
Well, this is interesting stuff.
Yeah, it is. No offense to the policies.
With what Jim just said, you know, about us doing a good job, we're very thankful and lucky and pleased to have a police department like Norfolk, or a town like Norfolk to police in. And I've got to hear about troubles for, you know, and different situations that occur throughout the world, and I would often refer back and tell people, you know, a lot of them were younger than me, the average age was 42, I would say that, "Have you ever heard of Mayberry? I work in Mayberry." And once in a while, some bad guys from Mont Pilot come down, and we have to take care of them, but it's mostly Mayberry.
True.
And I had the opportunity to do a presentation to a class, and I, I had to do a PowerPoint presentation, and I had some slides from the Memorial Day Parade, and I just displayed, you know, and people were very impressed with how green it was, and how lucky, and how nice. I told them, "Do you have no concept of what Norfolk is like?" You know, like yesterday was the anniversary of a former resident's passing, and his wife brought in, you know, some pound cake for us all, you know, to celebrate and to thank us for all the, that we've done for her and her family over the several years. So, you know, we're very lucky to have a town like this.
And caring people.
And caring people, yes, yes, absolutely.
On your team, on the fire department's team, everybody.
It's a, it's a great town. Great people.
It's a self-fulfilling prophecy, though.
It is, yeah.
You know, our diligence, all of us collectively...
Yes.
Wanting to keep it a safe town.
Right.
And makes that, you know, helps fulfill that...
Indeed.
Keeps it safe. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be safe without you guys.
Well, you know, it's, people that have talked about serving and volunteering on boards, one of the things that I hope people know and appreciate, you get as much back as you give.
Sure.
You know, you serve, and as, you know, all of us do in some capacity, but the town is really, you say it's a wonderful place to live, it's full of wonderful people.
Indeed.
And they give just as much, if not more, back...
Yeah.
Than perhaps the volunteers give from their perspective. It is a wonderful place to raise a family, and just a great community.
I like to say, "There's something in the water."
Well, other people say that, too, but I don't think it's the same meaning as yours.
Because if you go to the post office, the people there are, you know, very friendly, all of the banks, the stores, it's just a very friendly town.
Yeah. But when we need you guys, you're there.
We try to be.
And unfortunately, on occasion, we need you.
Right. That thin blue line, as they say.
Yeah, but you guys do a great job, as does our fire department.
Yeah, and the fire department, absolutely.
Yeah. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
A pleasure.
Thank you for the impromptu...
Yeah, thanks for, yeah, thanks for putting up with it. Saying, hey, we had a guest, we almost threw him out, Jack almost threw him out.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate the impromptu.
Thank you, Bonnie.
That media class paid off.
Thank you, y'all. Now, back to those policies.
No, no, we didn't, no policies, yeah, we're done with policies. We want the action items.
So the first action item is, we have Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15, allows our retailers, alcoholic beverage retailers in town, to begin selling liquor at 10:00 AM. So we have been requested, they have to come to us and ask for that, really, they just have to notify us, right? The way the law is written, it's not really a decision by us.
That's one of the most convoluted laws I think I've ever seen. It says that it's my right, and you don't need to vote it, and then it suggests that we voted, so you figure this one out.
The first paragraph says you don't need to do anything, and the second one says you have to fill out that form and get a vote from the board.
Yeah, so you don't have to do anything, but you do have to take a vote. So, I mean, I think we could go back to the licensees if you want to, but why don't we start with the assumption that we're gonna go forward, and I'll leave it to you guys to discuss. So we have been approached by the Norfolk Food Mart, Linda's Variety, Norfolk Wine and Spirits, and Provo Liquors, and they are requesting to open at 10:00 AM, effective October 23rd, 2014.
And this is on Sunday, just for people at home, so they know.
On Sundays.
And it is the state law.
It is.
They really can't condition it.
It's a, well, it's a formality, this is my right, but I move to approve.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
So done.
Two. All right, second item is, we please consider approving members of the Norfolk Elementary School Trust, and we have, I apologize if I mispronounce any of these names, we have Lisa Noke from Nine Mountain Rock Lane, Marissa Muldowney, 14 School Street, and Christina McCarthy, 15 Creek Drive. We do have one existing member, but these are the three new members, and their terms would expire on June 30th, 2017. These are recommended by the Norfolk Elementary School Committee.
Do they have to vote? Did they vote them, too, Jack, or just recommend, we're the only voting?
They recommended, you vote.
We're the only ones that have to vote? Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if they voted their recommendation, but...
Gotcha. Okay. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Number two.
Names here.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
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 I want to thank them for their service. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
And then the final action item.
Only Jeff.
Use it for Jeff.
Yeah. Not Scott.
Don't put him.
We'll cut straight towards him in a sec. All right.
Well, you have to sign these.
All right, well, fine.
So, now we, in, in open session, we need to discuss Fourteen Sharon Ave. And just for clarification, there have been occasions where I think I've referred to it as Fourteen Shire Drive, but it's Shire Park. But it's Fourteen Sharon Ave. It's the Gomes Landscaping Building under construction. We've gone through a process that you, you folks know well, but I'll just briefly outline. We've gone through a process of negotiations, appraisals. We hired an architect to complete an, a cost to complete. That appraisal came back and, you know, we asked that appraiser to do, be thorough and, and to be fair, to look at the parcel at Fourteen Sharon Ave and come up with a number that, that we thought would not only be fair, but would stand up in an eminent domain case if we got to that, that point. So, we ended up offering the full appraised, the full appraised value at, to the, to the gentleman. And in my understanding was he was advised to turn down that offer because he knew we were going to take the property. He, he knew we wanted the property for public safety purposes and we would end up taking it by eminent domain. So, this allows him to have some rights under eminent domain law that he would not if he just accepted the, the same value as a regular buy and sell real estate transaction. So, I did speak to Judge Wagner, who is, Mr. Gomes' legal representative, I guess. And he told me that he has advised, he doesn't know if it'll happen, but he's advised Mr. Gomes to just now go out and get his own appraisal. And then if that appraisal comes in at a higher value, he may or may not decide to challenge the, the value that we're offering him or, or pursuing under eminent domain. And he'd have three years to do that, is my understanding. If we go forward with the eminent domain taking, and I, you know, I don't want to speak for Mr. Gomes, but I don't think this is a, this is a hostile situation. You know, he did want to sell it. He wasn't really actively marketing it. He tells us he did get one other offer for one point one million, but that deal fell through. We're offering him that same number. So, you know, I think, I think he's getting, again, I, I can't, I honestly think he's getting a fair value. So, I, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I, but I, again, I don't think this is a hostile situation where we're, we're taking somebody's business. This has been sitting dormant for five to six years. He started construction, the market kind of fell apart underneath him. So, he wasn't able or decided not to complete the construction. And as I said, it's sat there for five to six years. So, so we've got to bring it up to the current building code. He was started under a different code, but the code has changed since then. And the, and as you, again, as you folks know, but the Metro Metacomit Regional Communications Center, the Regional Dispatch Center is interested in renting a quarter of this building from us, so four thousand square feet. They want to put on a second floor, so they'll have up to eight thousand square feet of space available to them. And obviously, the town of Norfolk would get rental income from that, that portion of the property. We've looked at the remainder of the building with an architect that we had under previous contract and we've done kind of back of the napkin type, actually one step above and back of the napkin, I guess, but we've done kind of proof of concept drawings to, to see that we could fit a police station in the remainder of the building. And that's obviously why we're here tonight, to talk about putting a police station in the remainder of that building. So, you have the order of taking from you, in front of you, if you want to, you know, we've kind of talked about it informally in the past in executive session, but this needs to be done in open session. And Copelman and Page has prepared this for us. And if you agree, I've already put it on the warrant for, to close this deal this week. And if you vote it, we will go and record this at the registry and take ownership of this building.
Jack, so once, on the recording date, is it ours? Is there a waiting period after that or no? I mean, once it's duly recorded?
Once it's recorded, we, we take ownership.
Begin work, do whatever we need to do, everything, right?
Yep.
You said up to three years? To even like, you know, on the, you know, the last day of the third year that he decides, you know, a person could decide that they contest the...
For this type of an eminent domain taking, he can only contest the value. He can't contest.
Right, after taking.
Can't contest the taking. So, so we would have ownership.
Matter of fact.
We would have a clear title to the property. And he would be able to go to a jury trial and, and challenge the one point one million. So.
That could take, that could be three years from now.
It could be. It would be based on.
Yeah, today's.
Obviously, the current, current value of the property.
Current condition, but not worried about, okay. But it's the three, okay. So, it's unknown for three years if it's, okay.
Not, not a question, but just, just to kind of add to what Jack has said, because I was involved with Jack in some of the discussions early on and the negotiations with this property. Just, just, no one likes eminent domain. You know, I mean, it's just, it's, it's something you, you just don't want to do, if there's any way of avoiding it. But there are some facts around this that just I think need to be reinforced. One, this building was for sale. This building was vacant for five or six years. It was not a permitted building. In other words, it did not have an occupancy permit. It had not reached the level of construction where someone could occupy that building. In meetings that, that Jack and I had with the owner, he stated that he had an offer for one point one million. We asked him to share that offer. He did not, would not. But it's safe to say that whatever offer that was would have been conditioned on having a permitted facility, which would have involved a greater expense on the part of the owner of that property. When the appraisal came back at one point one, you know, as we all know, having been in the discussions with him, I, I fully understand his rights and fully understand him taking that direction. But I just want to reinforce that I think that offer is extremely fair. And while it remains to be, you know, the unknown is still there in the future, I, I think Jack's comments that we proceeded with this very judiciously in trying to ensure that we didn't position ourselves to have an exposure further on down the line, that we might anticipate, at least at this point. And, and I think it's safe to say we do not anticipate that, based on what we know of the market, know of the value, know of the negotiations. It's unfortunate that, while understandable, I guess it's unfortunate. He's, he's leaving himself an option and there's nothing wrong with that as an owner. I, I can fully understand that. But I do think that, based on all the facts that we know, that this is an extremely fair offer.
Yeah, I guess, you know, the, the other thing that I would add is that there is a, an element of timing in terms of, you know, the collaborative relationship that has been formed among the towns to, to handle the dispatch in a, in a broader way than it's been handled in the past, where each community, each town has been handling it themselves in a lot of time. And there have been some grant monies that have been spent in order to form a vision, which is not easy to do, to get four towns to, to agree on something. And the towns were able to come together with a shared vision. And timing is of the essence now to see that vision through, because I think that this is a, a very good situation for the town of Norfolk to be hosting this facility. For economic reasons as well as other reasons, I think, I think we'd be proud to host this facility. And if we're going to accomplish that, we need to have a facility sooner rather than later. So, the idea of constructing a facility, you know, in terms of, you know, shovels in the ground, it just, it's, it's not, it's not viable. So, there's that element in addition to those that you brought up correctly.
Yeah, very, very well said. We, we, there were other sites looked at and considered and, and there was no real viable alternative to this. And it's probably six months behind, Jack, if not more?
Yeah, it's been a slow process. And this is, this is a, one of the reasons why this is a unique site for us and makes it valuable is, A, because it's already partially constructed, you know, that, that doesn't make it unique, but, but its location is right next to our water towers. So, it's, it's got easy access to the water towers, which makes it easy for the dispatch center to locate communication towers on top of those. So, it's a, it's a great location from dispatch point of view and obviously, police station point of view.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion? And if there's more questions, comments?
I move to authorize the town to go forward with the acquiring of Fourteen Shire.
Order taken.
I will second that.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
How many originals do you need signed, Jack?
Let's get busy. Why don't we do three and then, got two. Marion's got a third one left.
There's one.
Is that original?
Yep. Well, if they're all, is it good?
Okay.
You have three?
Well, you gave, I just signed one here.
Do we have a second?
Second one?
It was. Jeff seconded it.
Sorry.
We're not, we're not putting you to sleep over there, are we, Marion?
No, I was looking for the other.
She's busy working over here.
We're not talking policies now.
I need to sign.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yep, that one's good.
That's complete now.
That one's complete, okay. That one's complete.
We did have a, just as a side note, we did have a regional communications Metacomit meeting today, the Board of Directors. And we're continuing to move forward. There is a tremendous amount of simultaneous work going on there. There, the Operations Committee, who is really the chiefs of the, eight chiefs of the, along with some of the deputies, like Deputy Chief Carroll, are going forward with RFPs and other building specs and doing other policy changes. But some of the, the GIS information, so that, you know, going through and creating, working with, going out to vendors to create the graphical interfaces for the nine-one-one call systems and, and then, you know, being able to log that information so they can track all of the calls and, and be able to create the historic, you know, not only combine, take our old historical databases for calls and, and, you know, really they, they record information on everything that happens that goes through dispatch, you know. Somebody calls and says, make a note of, you know, Jim Leehan and his little, little sports car going too fast down one fifteen.
Chasing the motorcycle.
Chasing the motorcycle. They make note of that. And so, they're.
Gets duly noted, I guess.
So, now we need to combine all that data for the four different towns, eight different departments and, and then.
That's a big undertaking.
Create it into a new system that we can use going forward. So, there's, there's lots of data, lots of graphical data that goes on top of that. It's, there's a whole lot of, and then getting on to the radio communications and being able to, you know, the dispatchers to be able to, to broadcast to the right group so that, you know, we're not, we're not bogging down every officer with every bit of information, but making it easy for the dispatchers to collectively go across the different departments when they need to. It's, it's a complex system. So, that work is all going on in the background while we're working on a, getting a facility. So, this brings us an important step closer and making Metacomit and the new police station a reality.
So.
It's a good day.
Walk, walk us through the timetable now. So, we, we acquire this building tomorrow.
We acquire this building tomorrow or Thursday at the latest and depending on our attorney's availability to get over to the registry. And then we immediately go out to RFP for a project manager.
Thirty days?
Thirty, about thirty days to do that. It'll be published, it'll be put into the central register next Tuesday. It'll be published a week after that and then probably three weeks after that for responses and then hiring somebody. We can also start the architect hiring right at the same time, but we hire the project manager first. We then scramble to come up with the plans on the police side for, to build the police side of the building so that we can come to town meeting with.
So, we need to activate that committee pretty quick.
Yep.
Mr. Cronin.
Mr. Cronin and Weddleton and Mr. Wayne and et cetera. So, we think, and then at the same time, on the rec side, we have a project manager, but we need to go out, we had an architect, but now with a different building, we have to go out to bid again. So, we'll go out and get a new architect. So, that'll take probably four to five weeks. That was published in the central register today. And then they may get ahead, ahead of us on the construction side, but, you know, we're going to have to have the architects, whether it's the same architect or different architects, working together to, obviously there will be a lot of joint work going on, you know, important sharing of utilities and, and elevators and common space, et cetera, that, that needs to get.
Coordinated, done.
Coordinated, yeah.
Save money, time, everything.
So, so I, I think that to cut to the chase on the, on the rec side, well, if, if we go to, I go back to the police side, if we go, come back to town meeting and, and possibly an election, you know, that is next spring, May and June, probably. If that happens, then we go out to bid for contractors. And then it's a six to eighth month, six to eight month construction time. So, we're in the, you know, deep into the winter of two thousand fifteen, sixteen for completion. The rec side is probably a little bit faster than that, depending on.
Well, rec, rec will start quick.
Rec will start quick. They have a lot of technology, you know, like I said, that graphical interface and the radio towers will, are, will take a lot of work. But, but construction wise, you know, they're, they're relatively easy.
So, assuming, I mean, we've already borrowed the one point eight.
Yep.
So, assuming that we go forward with, that the town supports going forward with renovating on Main Street and building the new police department.
Yep.
That would work. I'm, I'm just looking at our debt. And I was, I was looking at it earlier today. And if this hits the books, probably won't hit until seventeen would be my best guess.
Correct, yep.
And there's a good chunk coming off the books.
And you got more King Philip coming off.
Off the books in seventeen.
And a little bit of Freeman Kennedy coming off.
I mean, when I looked at it today, it looked like it could be close to a wash on the debt side.
I haven't looked at it that carefully, I hope, but I suspect you're right. I mean, I know there's a lot of debt coming off on the non-exempt side, too. So, there's.
Yeah. I mean, that, that would be the best case scenario, that if we could make it, you know, rev, not revenue neutral, but you know what I'm saying, basically neutral.
Tax rate, neutral.
Tax, tax rate neutral, if you will. With the debt that's coming off.
Yeah.
With the new debt going on, that would certainly, if we can work it that way. My first run at it, it looked like it was pretty darn close.
And, and early indications of, from the assessors, and these aren't, these aren't John Neese's words directly, but from indirect conversations, is that market values are up. So, that's, so, so values should go up. So, not that it's an impact on tax bills, but it's an impact.
It does impact tax rate.
Impact on the tax rate.
Right.
And so, we should see the tax rate go down just by mathematical, because the values of all of our homes are collectively going up. So, that, that'll bring the tax rate down, which is a psychological.
Unfortunately, all it is is psychological.
Yeah, it's an important psychological.
Well, it is, it is, because it's a very misunderstood fact. And, and people don't understand that the rate and the value are somewhat synonymous. But I think the KP had a big chunk coming off. HOD's gone.
Yeah, I can, I certainly will, will be doing a lot of that analysis before we get to the May, but I can, I can look at that with Julie over the next couple of weeks and, and we could talk about that in two weeks.
Yeah. I mean, that's part of what we need to look at and how we present it, because it's going to be awful. I think it could be very favorable for us, the timing.
I mean, in the, you know, and then there's that argument, which is very important. And there's also the argument that we, that we need a police station and need upgrades.
That, that argument is hell water for some time.
Right. If you can balance it with not a big hit for people, that, to me, like, it's a win-win.
I want Sergeant Shane to come up here again and put him on the spot, but, you know, you, those folks who have walked.
He well knows.
Mayberry's not so nice there, is it, Bobby? Right, yeah.
Actually, it is similar to Mayberry.
Yeah, Otis lets himself into the cell and we go from there.
Doors unlock. Scare people.
Okay, thanks, Jack.
So, thank you very much for your support there. That's been a lot of work.
Great. Would you contact Mr. Cronin and ask him to reconvene?
I will, absolutely. I think some discussions with Mr. Weddleton, who's been an important member of that committee, he may actually, he hasn't formally resigned, but I think he may want to step aside. He'll be glad to participate as a contributor, but not as a full member. But he suggested that we replace him with Ray Goff. So, that, I think that would be a good, he's, Ray obviously has a lot of development experience. That would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great, I mean, not a great idea. I didn't mean to say it that way, but I think it would be good to have Ray on there anyway.
Yeah.
No matter what capacity he's in, he can certainly can contribute. We'll take all the help we can get.
So, I have a couple of, although.
Who, I've forgotten. It's, it's, it's been a while since we've met. It's George, Mr. Wayne, Mr. Weddleton, myself.
The two chiefs, Bob Bullock, myself.
Is that it?
Greg Morales was, but I think he's off.
I think he is, yeah. So, we have a vac, we have an opening.
Yeah. I have a couple of other town history report items. If, I'll go through quickly. I do have Julie's first draft of transfers. And she's breaking my old habits of having this done the night before town meeting. So, I apologize for being ahead of schedule. But there are some, in all seriousness, there are, there are some big items on here. So, this isn't final, and I'm not saying all these things will appear on the final list, but I'll go through them quickly. So, we have two employee benefits longevity. We, we went up, and I gave you some of my notes, but we went up from eighty-one to eighty-seven thousand dollars. Those longevity payments are based on length of service for employees. And we obviously had a high number of people jumping categories this year. And, you know, we budget for, we budget for the same kind of average salary increase that we would. But this. the same, uh, kind of average salary increase that we would, um, but this outpaced that just because there are some jumps in, in the, uh, in, you know, as people reach certain, you know, ten-year anniversary, et cetera, they go from about five hundred dollars a year to eight hundred dollars a year, so it's, you know, when you add all these up, there, it's not, um, a huge amount of money, but it's, uh, just a, uh, print, percentage-wise, it was a big increase, um, that's five thousand dollars, uh, employee benefits for health insurance, uh, we've talked about a little bit, uh, Julie is trying to estimate what we need for the end of, through the end of the year, and it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, just because we've had so much migration onto the health insurance plan this year, um, as she said, we're actually probably about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars short, but some of the indirect, uh, which, what we refer to as indirects, we'll cover that, and that's the enterprise fund for the water department, um, the SAC group over at the, at the elementary school will pick up those costs outside of the general fund budget, um, we can skip the next one, because that's, uh, again, that'll be covered by, uh, the indirect costs, but, uh, our employee benefits, uh, if you look at the line item today, it looks like we're sixteen thousand dollars overdrawn, but that'll be covered by the water department and the, um, and other groups that'll, that'll contribute back to that. Um, the one that I know, I'm not sure will stay here, but just selectmen out of state travel, um, Chief Stone and I did travel down to Virginia to, so we have one line item that looks out of whack, but, uh, we can probably cover that in the rest of our budget, um, information technology, uh, uh, Scott Bragman and I, and along with, uh, Superintendent Bellardi, looked at the three technology staff members, and, uh, we needed to make some adjustments, um, in their salaries for this year, uh, they're under contract to the school, but then we pay, we share that cost, um, and we bumped up Michael this year, and, and really can't speak enough for Michael Yang about, about the work he does for the town, and then his two staff members, um, and that's really to recognize, on the staff member side, that they, they cover some of our departments on a twenty-four-by-seven basis, and, uh, it's to, it's to cover that time that they spend coming in, particularly, you know, the dispatch center coming in when, uh, things go down on the weekend, and we obviously aren't having them cover, um, we don't want their systems down at any time at all, um, the next two are, are, uh, debt line items that, uh, um, really at the end of the, uh, budget creation process, uh, this year, we were scrambling to get the budget to balance, and, uh, um, we kind of unintentionally left those line items underfunded, so there's, uh, some, um, we go through the process of certification of notes and bonds, uh, we generally only spend about six to seven thousand dollars a year, but, uh, on years that we're gonna be issuing a lot of bonds, we'll go up to about twelve thousand dollars, and, um, we have been, um, with the, uh, the one point one million that was issued a couple of weeks ago, we, we have incurred some costs, uh, that we, a little higher than anticipated.
Jack, just a question?
Yep.
This, this is not a, those expenses aren't a result of what I'd call selling short and just rewriting?
No, 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 no.
So this, these are just pure administrative considerations associated with the transactions?
Uh, they are, like, when we issue new, when we issue the new one point one million dollars, we go out to the bond, the municipal bond market and issue those.
It's the expense for the, for the issues?
Yep.
Okay, it's not, it's not a, a redoing of any existing funding and selling short?
Nope.
Okay.
Not in this case, no, not, not this year, um, we have, we do reissue-
I know we've done it in the past, and, and we end up making money over time, I just wasn't sure whether that was what you were doing here.
And we can, you know, we can roll these costs into the issuance, um, but then we end up paying more, you know, it's like-
Right.
It's like paying for your closing costs in your, in your mortgage, we, you don't wanna pay for it several times over the life of the bond, um, the next one is the fire department, and, uh, you know, Cole has reached out, and he's looking for a, um, a stretcher, you know, it's a, it's a-
Hydraulic one?
Hydraulic stretcher for the-
Did we get one already?
For the second ambulance, no, we have one for the first ambulance, we do not have one for the second ambulance, and then the Lucas Press is a automated CPR machine, so they put this machine on a patient who is in cardiac arrest, and it automatically does the, the chest compressions, um, I had never seen it, so actually, when Cole reached out to me, that they, they have one of these, and again, they wanna put one on the second ambulance, um, I hadn't seen it, so they gave, uh, so firefighter Nichols gave me a, uh, showed, showed me how it worked, and it's, it's pretty amazing, um, I'm sure Bob has seen it in action, it's, uh, they use it quite a bit, and it allows, you know, it allows, obviously, the, the medic or the EMT to, uh, to do something else, to, to talk on the radio, or to administer medication, um, you know, well, obviously, the same person's not driving the ambulance, but, uh, it frees up their hands to do something else that's, uh, probably more important at that point.
Can I ask one more question?
Cole did want to suggest taking that money out of the ambulance fund, uh, Julie and I didn't think that was a good idea, just 'cause we're, we're only a year or two away from, from a new ambulance, um, or at least a, uh, some type of a-
I would agree.
Reissue, so, so we're not recommending it from the ambulance fund.
When we, um, when we break this down, and you, you're showing on below, you know, a hundred and nine, two seventy from free cash?
Yep.
I, I know free cash is certified as a bucket, but there are two components to that bucket, could we show the thirty thousand dollars coming out of the second component? I mean, we've got close to, what, half a million dollars in prison mitigation funds?
Yep.
So I, I think for purposes of town meeting, it would be clearer to folks if we showed, 'cause the thirty thousand is, is a capital component, if we show the thirty thousand coming from the prison mitigation sources, and then the remainder coming from the certified free cash, I know it is weak, I know she keeps it separate, and people view it as one bucket, but in truth, it's not, I think that would be easier to explain to folks, and also, when we get to the spring town meeting, if we're, we're gonna be spending more of that prison mitigation money, and that thirty thousand should come out of that component, if that's agreeable with everybody.
Makes sense.
I can show it that way, sure.
Yeah, make sure it's capital, and they ask for it, so that, not that it's gonna hurt them if they have other capital expenses, but it's fair.
All on the same checking account, but it's accounted for differently and used for different purposes, and I think it's a clearer explanation for folks.
Um-
Fine.
So then, just the, so those are the, the big ones that are kind of new items or, or not reclassifications, um, down the bottom, we're, we're just, Julie, Julie's showing you that, uh, the source to fund all those items that I've already talked about are, um, we have ninety-seven thousand dollars coming back from King Philip, um, because of the way the budget's worked out this year, we've talked about that a few times, but we, what we appropriated was a little bit too high, um, and then we would need a hundred and nine thousand dollars coming from free cash, but as you said, I can, I can break that up and show that from the capital side of free cash, um-
Well, just the thirty grand?
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Um, and then there are three other, um, four other reclassifications that Julie, department has reached out to Julie for, uh, one is just a, uh, I need to talk to her about this one, because it, I, I, this is really just a presentation item, but it's the transfer station debt, we have some, uh, vehicles in the, it's like the, uh, one of the, uh, not the excavator, the, um, big bucket trucks, um, if I had, if I had a five-year-old boy here with me, he could tell me which truck it was, um, we have that debt plant coming out of the transfer station, and it, we pay all of our debt out of the general fund, so we just need, it's just a, technically moving that from one department to the other department where we, where we pay all of our general fund, um, and then, uh, the building department, uh, Bob is just asking to move some money from salaries to expenses, we hired a temporary employee, Bob, uh, will be coming in a few, probably right after town meeting, to give you a presentation of what he's been working on, um, he spent a lot of time with our People GIS vendor, trying to get, uh, working on getting building permits and, and the other land use permits, uh, online, so, um, he's hired a, a student to help him import all that data and get that data all cleansed and, uh, up to speed, so he just, he paid her out of expenses, um, but he had budgeted for it in salaries, so because she was a contractor, he just needs to move that money, but, but, uh, the big story there is that the system that Bob's been working on, getting that, um, so that people will be able to apply for permits online, they'll still have to come in, uh, well, the next, a later phase might be able to be able to let them pay for it online, but they still need to come in and, and give us photocopies of their licenses, et cetera, but, uh, they can get a lot of the grunt work done online, and then track their, the status of their permits online, so that'll be pretty cool.
So you go through the town's website, through the building department, and you'll have something at the apartments?
Yep, yeah, and then, and then it'll be easy to add on the planning board and, and, um, conservation commission-
Anybody, yeah.
On top of that as well.
Right.
And then a lot of, and a lot of the communication that'll, you know, somebody pulls a permit, and the, the good standings will shoot out to all the departments, and then they'll be able to respond electronically with, uh, the status, and you'll be able to track online where that, where those goods, good standing statuses are, so, um, just trying to cut down a lot of the paperwork that flies around here, and, and obviously get slowed down, um, on occasion.
Now, is that something that Mike Yang has been working with him on, or is that-
Yep, yeah, Mike's definitely been involved, uh, um, People's GIS is a company that we brought in three to four years ago, and we put all of our assessor's, um, data on there, so the, that data's already there, we layered on, uh, DPW, all of the, uh, stormwater drains and hydrants and all that stuff, that's another layer on top of that, uh, on that system, and so now putting the permitting, uh, on top of that is the, is just kind of the next logical step, um, and the first one that'll really be seen by, by a lot of residents and, and other, um, users of our system. Um, police department salaries to expenses, uh, again, we just need to, uh, because of that retirement we had and some costs that we incurred, we're moving, um, money from salaries to the way we processed that, uh, at the end of the retirement, um, we just need to process that down to expenses, so that's just a reclassification from Chuck's point of view, and then she's got a couple of capital projects, uh, she just needs to move some minor money, three thousand dollars around, uh, to clean up some old, an old project, and lump that all money into the Freeman Kennedy construction for, for one purpose or another, I'll have, she's gotta write up explanations on these, um, for town meeting, but that was just to clean up.
Jack, on, just on the, when you brought Freeman Kennedy, remember, you know, you still meet with them, you know, getting some playgrounds built, I mean, where, where did it end up coming out in terms of leftover or nothing, or is it still too early?
Um, a little too early to tell, because we're still, still negotiating with the MSBA about some of the reimbursements, so, uh, I don't know, we, we definitely ended in the black, but, uh, I don't, I don't wanna guess at a number off the top of my head without, um, without waiting for that MSBA number to, 'cause there were some big numbers moving around, um, so we, worst-case scenario, we finish in the black, and, you know, hopefully we're gonna end up six figures in the black.
Nice, okay.
But that is, is really wrapping up, um, really the last, uh, job that the committee is working on is just to finish up this noise mitigation, um, there, some of the air handlers were, just to put a lightly unsatisfactory to the, to the neighbors-
Right.
So we finally were able to, it was a, uh, lifelong struggle to get the architect to go out and get some noise mitigation, you know, put up a sound barrier, basically, and shoot, so we're basically shooting the noise up into the atmosphere rather than having it-
Perfect, yeah.
Move horizontally, uh, and that is going on right now, but that's the last thing that the committee is really involved with, and then we'll, and then the MSBA will begin the close-down process of this, uh, project.
Did they move the one away from the superintendent's office?
I believe they did, I, I, her office does not shake anymore, so, that was a, that was interesting.
So the stonework on Rockwood for the entrance, is it gonna be some type of sign there, is that-
Yep.
That's not complete yet, though?
No, not complete, it's gonna have, uh, some type of, uh, uh, Bob has worked, Bob McGee's working on that with the superintendent and the school committee, just to, um, and I don't know if they've come up with the final design yet, but, uh, that'll have, similar to the, the, the lettering on the other side of the, on the Borbon Street entrance, but instead of having it, uh, placed against the thing, they'll, they'll have that, but they'll have that same type of, of lettering, um, well, that's one of the options, the same type of lettering on top of that wall that's there on, um, and I, and I can't picture it off the top of my head, but Bob has been trying to get them to look at the, uh, senior center sign, I guess that's got a nice, uh, presentation to it, that you can see it from either direction you're coming from, so, um, that's another option, that they'll, they'll put that on top of that wall that was built, so, I think that wall looks nice, it's a nice, uh-
Yeah.
Soon as we get, we've got lighting there, too, so once we get that sign up there, um, hopefully we can continue to pull traffic into that entrance rather than going down Borbon Street, especially on the weekends when you get sports games going on, and you have people coming from out of town that, uh-
All, all the debate about that road that went on, and it's turned out to be a great thing.
I haven't heard one complaint.
I haven't either.
It was a right thing, it was a right thing to do.
Just wanna thank Rob Gerdy for that.
Jeez.
Uh, so, next, what do I got? Um, I did, was approached by Old Colony Affordable Housing, um, they, and I've asked Sue Jacobson to give them a call back, uh, they wanna come talk to us about building some more, uh, they're gonna do, they're, they're gonna, they've got the capacity now, apparently, to do some more, um, what's the word I'm looking for?
You're talking about the-
Jimmy Carter, Jimmy Carter-type homes, uh, the, you know, the-
Affordable homes, Habitat for Humanity?
Habitat for Humanity, that's it, um, they've got the capacity to do some of those, so we did, uh, you know, they worked with us on the one over on Leland Road, right?
Yeah, Tuck and I did volunteer in that one.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah, it was nice.
What'd you do?
Community, like, you know, he, so it's just, you just signed up for days, we just did landscaping, whatever they had that day, when it was first going up, like, you know, grading their lawn, you know, the yard, so, yeah, yeah, a lot of work.
So they're hoping to do some more homes in the town, so, uh, they wanna come meet with us, so I know, I'll have Sue organize it, but, uh, we'll invite-
Is this, is this, this is the one out of North Attleboro?
Yep, yeah, it's the same one.
'Cause we've, we've, the municipal trust has met with them on many occasions, and they didn't have the funding to, to, 'cause we, we have a piece of property in front of the school-
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That we've been looking, you know, we've been trying to figure out how we can, we've talked to Tri County, you know, and, and they have some interest in, in doing it, um, and we talked to Old Colony, 'cause we were gonna do the one down on, on Main Street, down by the Catholic Church.
Yep.
And we ended up having to do that, in fact, we used their design, with their permission.
Oh, Paul Muller.
Yeah, we ended up having Paul Muller do it, a nonprofit organization, Helping Hands, I think it's called.
Sunshine, Random Smile.
Random Smiles, thank you.
Yep.
Um, and he did a great job.
Yeah, he did.
But we've got that piece of property, just looking for a home, so, uh, that, that would be great if they've gotten funding again.
He just reached out the end of last week, so I-
Fab, and you told Sue?
I told Sue, um-
Great, great, that's good news.
Yeah, she was out today, but I'm sure she'll contact him, and, uh-
That's great news.
Um, yeah, that Random Smile is, is a great organization, I have a neighbor who, who's been on the board there, and, uh, did a lot of great work.
Paul, Paul did, you know, he does, he's a builder out of Franklin, and he, this charity goes and helps folks that have, handicapped folks, for example, they go build ramps, uh, to help them get in their home and things of that, and all of their, you know, just contractors volunteering their time and materials to help folks in need, and, uh, he was terrific in helping, he, he basically managed and built that home at cost, for all intents and purposes, just at cost, uh, for the trust, and, um, it's just a great charity, wonderful program.
Um, we received a letter from, uh, residents, the O'Harts, at eighty-six Cleveland Street, and, uh, if you remember, that's kind of, that's the one that, it's the big farm, um, and they're in chapter sixty-one A, so they are, uh, looking to come out of chapter sixty-one A, so, uh, this is actually a, really for the assessors, um, assessors' process, there's nothing for us to do, they're, you know, we, there's, we don't get to execute our right of first refusal, et cetera, they're just taking it out of chapter sixty-one A, they'll pay, uh, back taxes for five years, the difference between their discounted taxes and their, what their regular market rated taxes, uh, real estate taxes would be.
Is there a reason for that?
Uh, in the letter, they said that they were looking to potentially sell their property, uh, as a regular residence in the next, uh, in the next year or so.
I thought their farm was ramping up, I mean, they had that cooperative to buy the meat and poultry and stuff.
Yeah, I don't know, I know he, a couple of years ago, when this kind of came to a head, he was, uh, he was looking to buy some other property, and I think up in Harvard or somewhere.
Yeah, he has another property there, when you go on the website, he used to have a second property.
It was Oxford or something, was it Oxford?
Yeah. I thought they had the second property.
They did, they already had it, and it was a question of which animals were here versus there, and there was a whole board of health, and we still be- So at least from the neighbor's point of view, that, that's probably good news, um, I have no problem with farms myself, as long as it's not my neighbor.
Okay.
So if we need to take action on that, we will. So if we need to take action on that, we will at our next meeting, but I don't, I don't think we do, so. We've got a couple of regional meetings coming up. I do Thursday, I have Norfolk County has asked to get together, and we've done this a couple of times over the years, but talk about shared services, engineering, could be dog officer or whatever, you know, they, they, a little self-preservation on Norfolk County's point of view, but they, but they try to get the communities together to inspire some regionalization, so they've got some new folks there, so it'll be interesting to hear that, maybe there'll be a new twist onto the, into the, into the topic. And then Scott, I don't know if you, I think you were involved in some email chains about the Medfield.
I sent it to you, you said they, they restarted, but you said it never goes anywhere, but you said you'd do it if you wanted, I live, kind of up to you, yeah, I get, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, so that's.
You can do it?
I'm going to go Thursday night, so.
I'm out of town, I, I got, I'm leaving Wednesday night, I won't be back till Friday. I didn't respond to that guy, but thank you then for doing that.
Okay. So if anyone else wants to go, we can go to a regional meeting Thursday night.
In Medfield?
Yeah.
Yeah, I had seen that email a couple of weeks ago. Yeah, and what's the history with that organization, I mean, has it led to?
This is the first time.
The first time.
So the, but they're, you know, and we've done this in, and I'm going to sound pessimistic and I don't mean to be, but, you know, we've done it in the King Philip towns, we've gotten together to talk about regionalization and, you know, sometimes there's a new Board of Select member or something that, you know, wants to talk about, why do we have to have seven street cleaners or something like that, and, you know, at the end of the day, you know, if we're four different towns, I'll take the street cleaner in the summer and you guys can have it in the win, you know, all winter.
Right, yeah.
Is that going to work?
So sometimes there's a, there's a little naive bit to the conversation. We've never done it with Medfield though, so maybe there's some, there's, and, and, and I, to be fair, that's how we got the Metacom Regional Dispatch Center kicked off, was just having conversations about regionalization, so.
Good work, yeah.
Certainly some good.
Maybe water.
Good to come out of it. I would love to have Regional Water District.
Is it Millis in this, is it Medfield, I think they were asking us, some new town, I forgot what the name was.
Millis would like to have us buy water from them at a.
Would they, they come to that Medfield meeting, they come to the Thursday meeting though?
I bet they'll be there, yeah. I think Medfield invited everybody that abuts them and, and others.
So as an example, the, the contract for the salt. Did that come out of, you said it's a new organization, but that involves Medfield.
That called, yeah, and I don't, I don't, that predates me, I'm not sure how that one, how we started doing joint bidding with Medfield on salt, something back probably when Butch, you know, Butch was here before me, but.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how much of an opportunity that could be. Things like that.
Yeah, there could be, I mean, you know, there.
They don't do joint bidding like for gravel or, you know, any of that.
We do through SURGE.
Oh, okay, yeah, we do.
Southeast Regional Blah, Blah, Blah Group, that we bid a lot of DPW, you know, asphalt and all that stuff. So we do do a lot of that bidding, which is great, because it, just the expense of bidding all that stuff is, is costly, but also the joint buying power of the 23 some odd communities that do that gets us a better bid, so that does work out great. SURGE does a lot of, they do our office supplies and all of our.
That's right.
DPW materials, so that, that's a huge help for us. Just, there is an advisory board meeting tomorrow night, I think it should be a short one, Jim, Jim went last week, I don't know if anybody else did, but I wasn't able to go.
There were only.
I think you wrapped up most of it.
We wrapped up everything, and they were just going to talk about the two bylaw components that they still wanted to discuss, one of which was the kennels. The only thing we owed them was the dates for the chiefs.
Okay.
Capital, which you have.
Yep.
Now, or transfers, I should, capital and transfers.
Okay.
I believe those are the only open items, everything else was done, so we're, we're not formally on the agenda just to supply them that, that data.
Okay. Jim and I did an NCTV show. You know, the NCTV Conversation Corner was started, actually by my predecessor, Bob Markle, with Paul Gerton. And, and over the years, nobody from NC, you know, Paul was the last director at NCTV that wanted to participate, he did a great job. Nobody at NCTV has wanted to step into that role, so I did it with Matt McDonald for a little while from the Boomerang, and, but Jim is, we've probably done 20, 30, 40 shows.
Four, five years of it now, yeah.
Yeah, so, but if any of you guys ever want to.
You said that before.
Do a show.
It's our own corner.
Jim and I, Jim and I enjoy it, but.
It's not the hockey show, it is still a hockey show.
No, it's not the hockey show.
It's a hockey show, it's a.
Split screen.
I didn't want to say we're going to show.
That'd be a one-way conversation.
We, I did talk about Ray, to Ray, about having him come on the show sometime soon and.
A great idea.
Yeah, he was a little hesitant, I, for his, for his gregarious and outgoing guy that he is, I don't know if he's a little camera shy or something, but we'll shame him into getting out, get him on there.
I did it when I was on planning, I did one.
Oh, I remember.
Oh yeah.
You did one with Ann Marie.
Yeah, Marie, yeah, yeah.
And then you did kind of a candidate's night too, did you, or was that just?
She, she asked me some questions about, you know, some of the goings on revolving, involving the elections and such, but it was primarily to discuss planning and what the planning board does, some of the activities going on in the town.
Knowing Ann Marie's talent for interviewing, did you talk about the Cold War or anything too?
No, it was actually, I, I thought it was pretty good, it was her first show, it was the first, you know, state and local, it was her first show.
She does a great job.
She does a great job, I.
It's a great service that she does.
And I, I.
It's a great service.
She and I have talked about it, I, I enjoy her show and, you know, and she does that, but she doesn't have any hesitation.
We did move the plant.
She doesn't have any invitation to move all, you know, to, to jump from topic to topic and, and she just kind of wings it as she goes and she does great.
But that's kind of fun.
No, I, I mean that in all sincerity, it's a great show.
I enjoy doing them with her, she does a great job.
Yeah. She still hasn't asked me to be on the show, but.
There's no point in preparing anything, because.
Hard feelings. So that was all that I had, other than goals. I did email them out, but I brought you hard copies. My only comment, I tried to consolidate everything that everybody had.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
These are probably more verbose than we've had historically, so feel free to cut and paste, cut and hack, do whatever you want.
Number four. Under planning. We should, a suggestion, we should have something in there about bylaw review. You know, cleaning up that process.
Hmm, that's a good idea.
Ray was looking at that, that's part of Ray's.
Yeah, I know, I, I mean, it's one of the things we want him to do, but we ought to have it in there, because that's, that's important.
Yeah, we'll have to think about how to do that without. You know, without just saying, well, next year, review all of our, I mean, somehow put together a schedule, I guess.
We could, we, I mean, one thought is, we have all of these potential development opportunities. So maybe the first place to look would be taking a look around all of the bylaws we have associated with development per se. I mean, I, we don't need to get into, I mean, we're into kennels to a certain, but I mean, those types of things we, we can defer, but I know, for example, lot clearing, there's been, remember that one? There've been a few situations where there's been some lack of clarity as to what, or differences of opinions as to exactly what that bylaw's intent is in terms of, say, clearing a lot, or how much can you take off the lot prior to getting a building permit, this kind of thing. Those are the kinds of things I think that might have some urgency to, for us, because those are the ones that seem to be causing problems.
And signs, signs by, signs.
Planning board member Jeff, what do you think?
No, I mean, I think that's true, I mean, if, if we want to focus the bylaw activities, at least prioritize the, the commercial district, the B1 and, you know, 1A, 115, you know, those areas, something like that. Approach it that way in terms of the bylaws that impact those areas, you know, could, you know, these things are interrelated to some extent, so that might be a reasonable approach to do it that way.
Okay.
And signs, Jeff, do you want to see what that?
Oh, just, the sign bylaws are, you know, convoluted at best, at least from people coming to me, you know, telling me about, you know, signs for, obviously mostly the commercial businesses.
And, you know, common sense should apply to some of this.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's, sometimes we lack that.
Yeah.
You know, just, just good old fashioned common sense as to what's right or wrong for the community, so. We are here to help and service.
It does become tricky, like you said, yeah, yeah, what's right, what's wrong, not what's right, what's wrong, but you get proliferation of signs too, I know, you know.
Well, I was taking a lot of the, you know, the washboards and.
Right.
Those kinds of things, I mean, it's just, sometimes we get stuck in the wrong kinds of.
That's because it's like not clear, right, and he has to enforce it, people bring it to attention, so.
Well, it's clear that they, they're not allowed.
Right, yeah, I was going to say.
Was it Mr. Garrity's executive order number four, I think?
I think that might have been number one.
Yeah.
But rightfully so, I mean, you know, common sense should dictate on some of these things.
Yeah, so we should fix that, I mean, that, that's an example of one of the bylaws we should fix, because now we've collectively decided to ignore it.
Okay.
And I, I've not heard a word of complaint on it.
No, I haven't either.
I mean, they're not abused, they're, they're not offensive. You know, and it helps support small businesses in the center of town, that, that's common sense to me.
Yeah. Just related to the number eight there, I did meet with Ingrid Dr. Lardy this week and we had a very good discussion about talking about just man, putting together a facilities department that, that'll oversee all sevens and hopefully soon to be eight buildings.
Get that pro forma put together for me?
We're working on that, it's never been closer to being done, yeah. I was looking at the minutes going on at the pro forma.
Now, that wouldn't require, I mean, that, that's just an agreement.
Yeah, we could handle it just like an agreement.
Just, just a, a mutual agreement between the school committee and the Board of Selectmen, that, that wouldn't require any, you know, we'd have, we wouldn't have to set up a charter committee or anything of that nature to facilitate that type of change, would we?
No, I think we could create a facilities department and, you know, budget a facilities department, yeah, no, it doesn't, no, correct. It's a budget, it's a budget process.
We could do that internally if it makes sense to do it.
Correct.
Yeah. Combined finance office and business office? You're just talking about not the public schools?
Study it, continue, we're going to, you know, Dr. Lardy and I talked about it, because we both have some retirements coming up, we've talked about in the past. And there's a lot of, you know, between payroll, human resources, and just accounting, AP processing, there's a lot of, we've eliminated a lot of the, the double entry between the two different businesses, if you will, but there's a lot of people doing the same jobs, we might as well have, you know, just for efficiency purposes, we might as well have them working as, in one office and makes it easier to staff and cover when people are out and all that stuff. You know, right, right now, when we have one of the key payroll people out, it's, it gets, you know, it's dicey if somebody else calls in sick.
If you could make one organizational change without regard to cost, that would make your, make us more efficient operationally, what would that be? Or is that too much of a loaded question right now? Well, we, we, don't, don't weigh the process or what it might or might not require, just what, what would that one change be that would make us more efficient?
That's just people or systems improvement too, in terms of automation.
Systems, people, organizational structure, whatever. I mean, is there?
My magic, if I had my magic wand, I can make one change?
Mm-hmm. Want to dwell on it?
I want to dwell on it.
Want to ask a friend? Phone a friend, you want to jump to questions, Jeff, can you jump to questions? Because he puts you on the, yeah.
A couple of smart aleck responses, but I'll leave those out.
Well, I, I have an issue, or not issue, question, when you say fit, or more efficient, sometimes efficient is efficient or save money or both, I mean, it comes with both, you don't care, you just.
It's, you know, I mean, logic would say that if it's more efficient, it would be reasonably more cost effective as well, but not necessarily.
Yeah, I was going to say, not necessarily.
Just could make a profit.
Upfront investment.
I mean, what makes us, what would make us more effective as a community in providing services to the town? I mean, that's a different way to look at it, because it, it isn't always cost. I mean, I mean, sure, it'd be nice to say if we had rubbish pickup for everybody in town, but obviously that's not economically feasible at this point, but not being unreasonable in, in the economics of it, if you could make one, I mean, is there a system that we don't have that if we put in place would make it better for folks? I don't know the answer to that.
One of the things that is, and this, I'm not sure directly addresses your question, but, but one of the weaknesses that we have organizationally is, and as we get, you know, as we continue to get bigger and our budgets continue to.
We're a $35 million business now.
Yeah, as we continue to grow, one area of weakness that we have is our, is procurement, because it's a, it's hugely time-consuming process to do it right.
And it's disjointed.
And it's disjointed, so we have department heads doing it, you know, creating RFPs and RFQs and all these different, you know, things that you can do. You know, I'm still the procurement officer, so I'm reviewing all of those. Am I reviewing them as thoroughly as I should be? No, but not, not with the volume of, of, you know, checking everything that's over $5,000 and checking everything that's over $10,000. Julie is, is covering me, because she's very thorough and won't let things go through the accounts payable warrant without being proper, so I'm not concerned that we're breaking the law, but I would rather have a procurement, you know, some of the bigger, you know, some of the bigger towns can afford it, and I'm not saying we can afford it, but some of the bigger towns have procurement offices that, you know, I tell them, I want to go out and, you know, go out and do this procurement for the, the police building and, and, you know, put together the stack of documents and advertise it and put it in the central register and do all that stuff. It really is a, you know, a full-time job when you think about DPW, the school, and then capital projects that we have, you know, and we kind of do it mishmash.
Is there any way that something like that could get wrapped into either the planner or the human resource area?
Yeah, and, and, yep, you know, and Scott has gone, Scott Bragan has gone to some procurement classes, so that's, that's one of the areas that I've pushed him towards to, to help cover that weakness that we have.
I like that.
Yeah.
Particularly with some of the larger ones that are more complex, you know, having a resource, even if it's not every purchase order, certain ones, yeah.
Grants is another one that I've always felt.
Yep.
I mean, we're, to steal a phrase from one of our other advocates of, from a different area, you know, we're leaving money on the table, I think was the quote. That's true, we, you know, and it, it's not by intent, it's by lack of knowledge.
Yeah, you can go out and, and, again, spend full time, look, going out and looking for grants.
A lot of towns have grant, grant officers, that's all they do, is pursue grants for the community. Now, I mean, obviously we can't have that, but as I look at, as I was thinking through your organization, it was a loaded question, I, you know, probably should have preempted it, but.
He knew it anyway, he's going to say.
But it was a loaded question?
Yeah. He wouldn't ask.
Oh, I do, yeah.
Yeah. You know, if, if there is a way that, as you, as you look through the organizational structure and combining some of those functions, because we've got two talented folks now in HR and in planning, and I know the planning thing is going to get bigger and bigger and bigger, and, you know, there's a possibility of zoning enforcement and all kinds of things that that could evolve into, so, you know, you can't, you don't want to throw something into the pot that prevents us from expanding it to what its original role was, but I don't know if there's a way that we could, you know, capitalize on some of the resources that we could bring thinking grants, but procurement probably is more important than grants at this point.
And grants, Jack, when you go into the, you know, that regional meeting, because you said, obviously, the bigger towns can either afford them, is there any, has there ever been, not done, but thought about, like, shared grant officer? I know, not that they compete, but if, like, I always read, I see, like, in the paper, you know, I've asked you, and you said the chief said that we'd never get them, like, those safer grants? I know they're written by the chief, or he might write them, but every time goes for them. If you had, like, remember how we were gonna think about even sharing the plan, remember we interviewed that planner, we thought about maybe sharing or, you know, like, cooperative, if we can't all afford a grant officer, because if you write a basic grant to get maybe, well, it's a school playground upgrade, or, you know what I mean, that, you know, where, I don't know.
I mean, it's a good idea to talk about it to Thursday regional meetings.
You know what I mean, just because, I know we all want, if they have, you know, because, like you said, leave money, maybe we don't know where, because I know schools have, but they're kind of, I assume they're school focused, you know, getting school grants for, you know, for supplies and stuff, but there must be on the municipal side.
We still do get a lot of grants, the police department, the fire department.
Yeah.
I know, Robin pursues them, I mean, we get a lot of grants in, it's just that, you know, there's a lot more out there.
Scott's been getting them through MYE and some other.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah, but you can always get more, I mean.
Because they almost, I don't say pay for themselves, I mean, how it is, it almost covers, you know, what they're getting granted, just the way Scott saves all that money on insurance, you know, kind of, you know.
I need someplace where we could, we could put some resources and probably would pay off pretty quickly. Mr. Beckenask would say, pays for his own salary at the Department of Corrections.
Yeah, that's perfect, I mean, that's what you're looking for, ideally, and then something, yeah.
I'll go with you Thursday, okay? I'll pick you up if you want.
Okay. Well, I see that good, thanks, Jack.
I have one more handout, and that is from, I have the warrant. But before we do that, I just have the, this is from Gino, so you may have seen that already. Gino Calucci, who.
Hmm.
He's working with CPC and has created a draft for Norfolk Open Space and Recreation Survey. I just got it today, and he asked for both me and for you folks, if you're interested, to provide feedback on what's here and what's more important and what isn't here. If you want to, probably have something you want to read right now.
Now, what was the thing that maybe we did rec, though? We kind of did, you know, we used, it was online, you know, because, you know, we saw things that people wanted dog park or frisbee field, okay.
I was more focused towards our recreation facilities.
Okay, but what you want, I thought, did Zane have that? Did you talk to him about that? I just know we, I was there, you know, we looked at it, we got a decent, you know, small response, because it was online, you could do it. My members said, like, also, you're right, as a town, what would you want, remember? Because a lot of people wanted frisbee golf and came back, and some people wanted, you know, the dog, a dog park. I forget how open, and I thought we asked a question, like, how often do you use the facilities?
Probably.
Yeah.
I mean, I took that survey, but it's been a while now.
Is this going to go out to everybody?
Yeah, I don't know what means, I don't know if you've talked about it.
Well, no, I haven't, unfortunately, I was traveling and missed the last meeting, but, you know, going way back, you know, we had done some things electronically with the Survey Monkey and such, I don't know what state of the art is now for surveys online, I can just, you know, see this being a significant undertaking if it's not done electronically.
I think it would have to be, you'd want it to, yeah.
I would say yes and no, I mean, because people have access to all the electronics easily, but other than maybe, unless you have a reader, like the professors now do when you do multi tours, because we can scan it back in, it'd be nice if you had copies of the town hall library for people who want to fill it up in paper, maybe.
Yeah, or at least introduce what's online on a piece of paper with, whether it's a tax bill, whatever, some paper document that will direct them to the town website, something like that, but in terms of this actual survey, and all the folks at home can't see it, but it's pretty comprehensive, I mean, it's all, it's almost all checking, checking the box type of stuff, but there's a lot of boxes.
Just, Scott, something you said reminded me, when John went to, back to school at UVM this fall, he had to buy a.
Oh, participation thing, like, you click for questions?
Yeah, like they have on.
Tucker has that called.
Lifeline.
Yeah, and it's really cool.
Who Wants to be a Millionaire.
Professors want that, I thought you had to buy one, I don't know if Tucker had to buy, now you say that, especially as a freshman or lecture hall classes, like, the gauge is done, the professor gets the gauge on his stamina, gets involvement, it's a really cool thing, right?
Yeah, I don't know if it logs each person's response, obviously, it asks the audience.
Yeah, I forgot, I haven't heard that in a while, I don't know why.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
So he knows he can move on to the next he or she professor can move on, that's class understands it.
Yeah, yeah, just, does everybody understand, yes, no, or?
Well, even if you put a problem up or a concept, you're right, and they click, and if you don't get the concept, the professor now, because, you know, at college, you hope that they're not as shy, but, you know, it was in high school, you don't raise your hand and ask a question, because people think.
Fantastic, even interest level, you know, if class is interested in what you're talking about.
Emily hasn't mentioned that, but Tucker did, right, that's it.
I assume this is going to become a component of the master plan revision, I would think.
Certainly could, yeah, it should.
Should be a good component of that.
The master plan tries to incorporate by reference all these type of documents.
You know, I read a note today from regarding the Boy Scout, not the Boy Scout land, the airport land, about its future use and, you know, what they're going to do and not do, and it was an email, very well written by the folks, one of the young lady that has been such an advocate of that, and of course, has been privately purchased now. And I've read the master plan, but I could not recall whether or not we included private property as part of the master plan. And that was kind of a question that was in the email. Does anyone know? I'm gonna, I've got the master plan at home, I just didn't get a chance to look at it tonight, but do we include, when we talk about recreational opportunities, take the airport land, which is, you know, well, recreational passive conservation land, you know, but if it's privately owned but deeded conservation, is that included as an area that the town can participate in?
My recollection from looking at the master plan is that it may refer to the property but not specify whether it's public, private, just refer to preserved, you know, lands, open space, what have you, so maybe the assumption that people would make under most circumstances is that it's public, but I'm not sure that it differentiates in there, public versus private.
Because I know.
I could be wrong, and it's pretty, it's 90 some odd.
I don't remember either, Jeff.
It's 90 some odd.
I know it's mentioned, I know it's listed in there, we list all open space for all intents and purposes, but if it's private property, and, you know, from what I've read, and I don't know this to be how they're going to end up, but, you know, and they have a perfect right, that, you know, they're going to have defined uses, whether they allow horseback riding or don't allow horseback riding, it's private property, they have a right to have those kinds of conditions, I know their intent is to make it available to the community, you know, to enjoy it and see what is really a wildlife preserve in their view of that area, and it's beautiful land, but my question was, and it was kind of asked in the note, and there were different opinions, and I'm just curious, is there, because if it is in the master plan, and people, I don't know if a lot of people read it, but let's hope they do, just for the heck of it, and they see this listed, it could be, you know, you don't want to create an issue where you're encroaching on private property or doing what is not wanted by the property owner, if you will. I'm just not sure how we address, you know, that's just something that popped up today that I just didn't know the answer to it.
Yeah. It's word, so just do, you know, just do a search, right, see if it says the word private for now, and you find a license that's private.
Like Stony Brook is a resource, you know, beautiful resource for the town, and it's in the master plan, it's listed in the master plan, but it's identified as a private organization, you know, and talks about, in fact, I don't even think the hours are listed in there and things of that nature, I would think we'd want to do that for private property, and not have the perception that the public can go do whatever they want, you know, on that property.
Now, are we going to put, they, I haven't seen this come up as a question yet, are we going to put a conservation restriction on the, on the airport property?
I think that, I think that is their intent.
Because then, because then, Jeff mentioned it a second ago, I mean, I think then, then you would have the right, right, if you will, to put it in the master plan, I mean, I wouldn't want to put, I wouldn't want to put something in the master plan that talks about public access unless there was a conservation restriction or some other deeded rights to, for the public to access the property.
I think that's what Jim was maybe saying, right, or thinking about, right? You know, whether it's there or not, how's that work, you know?
And I'm not sure we have any of those situations.
I mean, I don't want to, you know, this wasn't addressed to me, so I don't want to read this into the public record, but, you know, it is, it is work in progress, and I think they're trying to figure out exactly how they want to frame the, and I don't want to, maybe I just let it go at that because this wasn't addressed, but it's, I'm kind of curious, I'll share this with you tomorrow, and be curious, because the question's asked, is it customary to include private properties in open space surveys?
Sure.
I didn't know the answer.
Oh, because the airport property right now is on, I need to check on that. Oh, it's a need to check on that, though, it's written there, it's need to check, right? Do I fill this out now, Jack, do we have to?
Uh, no.
It says you can fill out the paper version, or it says that it's a Jack Hathaway or may complete the survey online following link. Put that into your Xbox.
Yeah, he's looking for feedback on the form, he's not looking for us to fill it out, right?
Just, sorry, Jack. Sorry, Jack. Jack knew it, Jack knew it, you know, not to answer that question.
I was going back to the how to reorganize question that Jim asked, and that was going to be my response to it.
Yeah.
Eliminate the board of selectmen, or something like that, based on those types of comments.
And you have to sign a lot of warrants, though, Jack, admittedly.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
My final piece of focus is just the Fall Town Meeting warrant, and there aren't two, yes, sorry, thank you, aren't too many changes, I did put some dates in for the chiefs, but need to do two things. So Chief Bushnell received some feedback that, from the state fire marshal, that the legislature would probably not accept greater than two years on the fire side, so he's sticking to that two-year extension number.
Okay.
I've reached out to Senator Ross's office this afternoon and didn't get a response back, if that, if that holds true on the police chief's side or not, so.
So I didn't make that up?
What's that?
I didn't make that up.
No, you didn't.
Well, is that law or is it just a fight marshal, it's not really, you thought?
No, that's a, that's a, just a legislate, legislature's past practice type, they'll extend it for two years, but not, not beyond.
Two years beyond 65, I mean?
Yeah. And then Copeland and Page is doing a little bit of research on, on Chief Stone, Chief Bushnell's side too, just because he won't be, he won't have reached full years of service as of 65, because he came to Massachusetts late in his career, so there's a question about whether or not he can continue to contribute to the retirement fund or not from 65 to 67, so they're trying to figure that question out. The initial response was they didn't think he could, so I imagine that's probably the right answer, and Chief Bushnell didn't think he could either, so, based on his research, so.
There's a maximum number of years, though, isn't there, under the county retirement system?
Yeah, so Chuck, on the other hand.
He's got the maximum.
He's max, you know, he's reached the full years of service, so adding more years of service on won't do him any good, so it's to his better benefit, and it's actually to the town's benefit too, to not have him contribute after 65, so we wouldn't have to contribute our portion either, and so, and then his retirement will be capped as if he retired at 65, but he just won't start receiving benefits until he actually retires, so, we get a couple free years, you will, so it works out, it's a win-win situation. So that's, those are two questions, I don't, and then I just made some changes that Copeland and Page, it's, you know, we had some examples, we had some language that was getting deleted that we listed the paragraphs, but we didn't actually show the language that was getting deleted, so I made those types of changes in here. So I think the warrant is all set except for numbering, so if you want, I can have call up Jonathan Smith and we can do that.
I missed that, I mean, I didn't miss it.
That's an old joke that I bring back every time.
It's a very old joke, yeah.
Jonathan loved the warrant.
He took great pride in numbering the articles.
He did a great job.
All right, that's fine, do that.
Respectfully said.
I have no problem with that. Saves us from going around, what's going on for earth?
It was one of his favorite things to do.
Yes, it was.
I don't want to take that away from someone, then.
Well, I think you were kidding about calling.
I was, yeah, I was.
I mean, this, none of this is going to take a long time.
That's what we thought, but you never know, we did remember the hunting article. I don't know, I don't know, yeah, I mean, that was like six days.
Did you sneak that one back on here, Mr. Sherman?
We can't, right, I don't know where they were staying, we're not allowed, I would love to have that on again.
Yeah, we are kind of in, we're kind of in limbo there.
Yeah, I just didn't, I shouldn't even brought that up, I was just thinking that, it's really not anywhere.
So, you know, on my, based on my limited experience, I know one of the things that's been done in the past is to try to make sure the ones that would generate the most interest discussion, that they'd be done at a point where people would be present, they would be more likely to be present, I mean, this is all going to be done in one evening anyway, so maybe it's not as critical as if it, you know, expected to go to two nights potentially than you anticipate.
I think the wastewater treatment plant is.
That's one that'll have some discussion.
That's, so you want to, I don't know if there's any thought about where to place that, but that's at the end right now.
I would move that up.
The chiefs, I don't think is very controversial, I.
The what?
The chief articles, I don't think are very controversial, I don't think there'd be a lot of.
No, and I don't think, I don't think the marijuana will either, and that's just the state.
Yeah, I don't think any of the zoning articles are.
And unless, no, I mean, even the.
Let's put it before, how about, can we do it right before the zoning, what's, you know, first zoning article, page one?
I'd move it up, yeah.
You know, just to get, not, I don't want to say out of the way, right after the capital budget, because even though it's not a cap in this case, before we get into the zoning there.
So the three wastewater articles?
They seem long, there's a lot of underlines, I know that they're not, you know what I mean?
Something in there?
Put it here.
Cringe.
Yeah, cringe, so we put it right after the capital budget, Jack, you know, Article five, maybe, you know, wastewater was.
So wastewater will be six, seven, and eight, because those are, those are three, those three go together.
Yeah, I would do that, it's a good suggestion.
Like, I think everyone would still be there, and it's, like you said, I'm interested to hear what people have to say, and then the rest, I don't.
You're gonna, you'll be there, right?
Not that way, no, you're on Article six, but, no.
You might as well move the chiefs up too. I mean, I don't think that will be controversial, but, because it's not requiring us to do anything, it's just giving us the permission.
No, and I think.
Whoever's there, just choose.
So those will be nine and 10?
And then do the zoning as a block.
Those are nine, who goes first, Chief Bushnell, yep, 10.
How about the clerk one, just to me.
You might as well move that up too.
Make that 11?
Yeah, and then just do all the zoning.
Okay, just to follow that order, right, after that, boom, I think that makes sense. I mean, just, the fun stuff, I don't say the fun stuff, zoning is important, but I don't think that the zoning is this controversial this time, right, unless I'm missing something.
Well, most of them are house cleaning, I mean, you know, I don't think the solar's going to be, that's just common sense, doesn't take away anybody's rights, it just.
It makes it a special permit, right?
Yeah, no, I see.
Only for ground based.
Right, right, right.
Only for ground based, if somebody wants to put it in their roof, it's by right, there's no issue, no discussion, but if they want to put it on the ground, it just gives the planning board some opportunity to have some consideration for the neighbor, like puffer, trees, fence, things of that nature, and I know of only one incident in town where that happened, so.
Right, but I do remember the one, the one zoning board working committee thing I filled in for you, was brought up, even that, not that it's not defensible, but even the ground mounted, you know, it is special, which I think is a wonderful idea, but isn't it still kind of by right, but?
It's by right, but, but there is some mitigation potentially involved in that, the one that was mounted on the ground, and it had to be mounted on the ground because of the physical location of the house and not getting the sun, which is the only reason I think you'd do it, was right up next to the neighbor's property.
And they still would have got, I mean, even if you had, because that, you know, it it was just, again, brought up, it doesn't mean-
They had a right to do it, but it, it just gives the zoning, it gives the planning board saying, you need to put up a fence, you know, or you need to put some trees in to buffer it from your neighbor, or something like that. That's all it is.
But I just remember the gentleman saying, though, if the trees go too high, it starts to block the ground, then you'd be chopping your trees, or if the fence is too high.
Common sense is not-
I agree, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it at all, because I, I certainly understand, like, say, if you don't want to-
There's got to be somebody on the planning board-
Yeah, I'm already having flashbacks on this one.
Yeah, no, I know what you're saying, yeah. Again, I don't think-
Glad you guys are having fun with it.
And the cattle one is, is not going to interfere with anybody. That's, that's just following the state and it's cleaning up a couple of things, and it just-
Seems long, but-
I mean, most of the-
I'm talking about the number change.
As is usually the case, these issues come up because something evolves, you know, happens in town, and we don't have something to address it. That's usually what happens.
Yeah, we do.
So, I don't think any, and the other ones are just wordsmithing. They don't change any intent or anything, they're just wordsmithing, so. There's no change whatsoever in terms of the intent of violence. So, I don't think there's anything there that shouldn't. I mean, you never know.
Right.
We've gotten into discussions on eight hundred dollars on Memorial Day, so you never know.
Yeah, that's true.
No problem, yeah.
So.
No problem, yeah, I agree about that.
Anybody had any good or bad comments about the look of Town Hall?
I've heard good. I've had several people comment. They found it very attractive.
I think, yeah.
I think any bad.
The other one, come back again, again, I won't say the person's name. Someone said to me, well, let's do it, when's the library coming next? Because they want the match and do, you know, but it wasn't good or bad.
The library needs it.
Right.
Library, I'm not sure of the timing, but the library will, you know, we should do it.
Those boards are too low to the ground, and where the drainage on the side has caused problems for them for years.
Yeah. Marion picked out the color, so if you like the color, it's Marion's.
It's great, no, it's perfect blue, right?
If you don't like the color, Marion picked out the color.
And Jack approved it. If you don't like the color, Jack approved it. Marion picked it out if you don't like it, Jack approved it.
As it should be.
She made the wise decision that no one on the board had the taste necessary to make that decision, so she, she took over executive authority.
I have no problem with that. Oh, Jack, remember the email I traded, I know it's on, about the policy for transfer station and public space?
I got, I have not-
Okay, no, that's all right.
Followed up with Coleman and Page on that one yet.
Okay.
Um, but you, I mean, Marion, I haven't talked to Marion about that, but, you know, we have a, um, the, the practice is when somebody wants to do any political, uh, advertising or political, uh, signature gathering at, at the DPW, we, we know we can't say no, but, um, so the policy is just trying to keep people in, in a safe area.
Location, just location.
Location, so, um, somebody did raise a question about whether or not we're, we're crossing the border of, uh, policy may be a little too restrictive, so I'll ask Coleman and Page to look at it, but.
Could we, um, it's been a while since we've gotten sort of a full update from council on activities and things like that.
Yeah, Jeff would like to come in, so, good, glad you brought that up.
So, I think that would be a good thing?
Next, do you think, is that fine? Jeff won't be there, is that all right, Jeff, if he comes in?
We should wait till Jeff's here for the-
Yeah, I'll wait, I'll wait, because, yeah, I'll wait, next, sorry.
Fortunately.
After that, whenever, you know, Jeff can deem us with his presidency.
I hate to pay, I hate to pay the hourly rate, but I think it's important that they